Just now. You show up with your.
There's a T-shirt for you if you want one.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Good evening. So, good to see so many, I can't say smiling necessarily faces, but some smiling faces in the audience here. Very appreciative of folks coming out tonight to talk about a very special subject and one special education and other related services, especially as in another month, we're going to be actually, later this month, we're going to start discussing the budget and have an opportunity. And for the public, on December 20th will be our next regular meeting. Ahead of that meeting, I believe at 7:20, we'll be having, looking for the public, at 7 o'clock?
6:30.
Oh, sorry. Good catch by my vice president here to remind me, it's at 6:30, the special opportunity to, for the public to weigh in on ideas for the budget, and then we'll have our regular meeting at 7 o'clock. The first order of business today is our audience to visitor, and Alexis, if you could do your thing.
Good evening. This is Alexis Shaq from the superintendent's office. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you're using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q&amp;A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar, or you may raise your hand on your computer if your device has a microphone by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand, or by dialing *9 on your phone. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you will be promoted to panelist. After you make your comments, you will return to attendee status. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Okay. If people are going to be calling in or on Zoom and they can't see, Mr. Lockhart will raise a red card for those who can see at the 2 minute 32nd mark, which will tell you to start winding up your remarks, and at three minutes, he'll hold it up and keep it up. But if you can't see it, at some point, you may hear a voice interrupting you to let you know to finish, to finish, start finishing up your remarks. So, first, is there anybody in the building here, in the room, who'd like to address the board tonight? Not seeing any. Alexis, is there anybody online?
Mr. President, there are no individuals with their hand raised, and there are no questions in the queue.
Okay, without objection, then. Now, close audience to visitor. I don't know if they want to do it. I guess we can do it, and then if there's any questions. The next order of business, we have a few business items that we need to approve tonight. And so, for the first item, Clover Street partial roof replacement, look for a motion.
Mr. President, move that the Board of Education approve the project as completed and accept Clover Street School Partial Roof Replacement Project, State Project Number 164-0100RR for public school purposes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Pinos, like, oh.
He jumped ahead of him.
Jill Cantor. Fighting for the seconding.
Lockhart and Cantor?
Discussion, Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, on the background for the public, a 7,000 foot square foot portion of the roof at Clover Street Elementary School, which is an area of roof that is above the nurse's office, main school office, and corridor along the cafeteria, was replaced due to ongoing leaks. A third-party professional inspection found that the water saturated much of the roof insulation and a portion of the roof area. There were limited options to repair, and it was approved to have a full replacement of approximately 7,000 square feet of roofing. This section of school roof was installed in 1995 and is long longer under manufacturer's warranty. The partial roof replacement project qualified for the partial reimbursement by the state of Connecticut. The state requires that a formal approval process be followed by the Board of Education and the town council. To comply with the applicable funding regulations, the Board of Education must accept the project as completed in order for the district to apply for the final grant reimbursement. So, the status of the project, Mr. President, is in order to comply with the political funding regulations, the Board of Education must approve the project as completed and accept the Clover Street Partial Roof Replacement Project for public schools, and I encourage the board to approve.
And we have Ms. Batchelder here, and Dr. Hill, obviously, if there are questions by the board. So, are there questions? Mr. Pinos?
I just assume everything's working, nothing's leaking.
Yes.
No leaks? Okay.
So, right, so, and the reason, just because this was finished in 2019, in September of 2019, the warranty didn't come until March of 2020, and that's when everything shut down. So, that's why you're seeing it so far out. So, they, the state is now back out in the offices working, so trying to push everything through, so the town gets the reimbursement for this one, and then Sage Park, the next one.
Any other questions?
This is, this is a completed job.
Correct.
Make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Without any questions, are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Abstentions. Vote carries 900. Ms. Golinski is partaking tonight, but not, obviously, here on the dais with us. Next item is the Sage Park Middle School Partial Roof Replacement, and is there a motion?
Mr. President, move that the Board of Education approve the project as completed and accept Sage Park Middle School Partial Roof Replacement Project, State Project Number 164-1010RR for public school purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
This time seconded by Mr. Pinos. Discussion, Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, Mr. President, a 55,000 square foot portion of the roof at Sage Park Middle School was beyond its useful life expectancy and became problematic with ongoing leaks. This area of roofing was originally installed during the 1993 building addition. The partial roof replacement project qualified for partial reimbursement by the state of Connecticut. The state requires that a formal approval process be followed by the Board of Education and town council. To comply with the applicable funding regulations, the Board of Education must accept the project as completed in order for the district to apply for the final grant reimbursement. The status of the project is completed. In order to comply with the applicable funding regulations, the Board of Education must approve the project as completed and accept the Sage Park Middle School Partial Roof Replacement Project for public school purposes, and I encourage the board to approve.
Okay, questions by the board? Was this, when was this completed?
So, this was completed in 2021. However, this is just phase one. You will see me, I will have to come forward to get the motions for the next phase, and I believe the town is looking to actually start that this summer while they're doing the HVAC, because the demolition will already be going on. So, this part is completed, the whole roof is not. I'll be back in front of you, probably in the early spring.
Now, was the replacement paid for by the town, not the school, correct?
Right.
Okay. So, the reimbursement is going back to the, partial reimbursement will go back to the town?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries 900. Now, we're ready for the main event. Special education presentation, Ms. Wykowski. And I think, in talking to Christina before, if we could hold our questions, I think she said there was kind of a logical break, and so, at that point, for us to ask questions, if there's something that's so important that you, it won't, it'll hinder your understanding here on, as far as board members go, by not asking the question, allow, allow a couple questions.
Sorry, we practiced this and it worked, I swear.
Everyone has notes?
We're good. We studied before we got here.
Perfect. There'll be a quiz at the end.
I'm ready for 39 pages. Get on.
All right, we are good to go. I think our microphones are on and good to go as well. Thank you for having us tonight. I just wanted to start by introducing my wonderful team. To my right is Amy Bohm. She is our primary special education supervisor. We have, to my left, Christopher Bailey, who's our intermediate special ed supervisor, and then we have Lindsay Jardine, who's our secondary special ed supervisor. The four of us will be presenting tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about special education law and our responsibilities as a district to uphold that law and stay in compliance. We'll look at our special education and pupil services framework. We'll talk about our staffing in Windsor, and then look at special education categories that we service, as well as some of the data that goes along with the students we service and the prevalence that we're seeing in district. Just for your knowledge, I oversee the district schools, our out-of-district placements, magnet schools, charter schools, and non-pub schools all fall technically under me, although my wonderful team helps to support in ensuring that those schools are functioning appropriately and the students are getting what we need. Amy, she really focuses on Oliver Ellsworth and Paquonic School, as well as all of our preschool programming. So, she is responsible for all the 150 preschool students, whether they have an IEP or not. And we just had a visit for accreditation on Monday, and our team did a really wonderful job, and Amy must have worked and not slept all weekend, but she does that preschool programming for us. Chris focuses on Sage Park Middle School, Clover School, and JFK School. Lindsay is primarily Windsor High School and our off-site programs here at LP Wilson. And then, all of us do case manage students who are in our outplacement facilities. Not presenting with us tonight, but a wonderful member of our team is also Ms. Dana Fudge, who is here somewhere in the audience. And she's an integral part of our pupil services team, because not only does she supervise everything related to school counseling, she also ensures that our students at the secondary level are getting what they need through their 504 plans, and ensures that we stay in compliance with those plans. So, she plays an important part on our team and wears many hats in the district. So, tonight, we're primarily going to talk about special education, but a lot falls under our department, you know, as we are pupil services and special education. So, I did want to just briefly touch upon the fact that we do oversee both Section 504 plans and the IEPs. And so, there's a lot of similarities between the two documents. Both require us to file, follow guidelines and timelines to ensure that we're compliant. They ensure that we review plans to make sure students are getting what they need, and they're provided to all of our staff, so that all the staff knows what students need. So, staff, anywhere from a classroom teacher to a specials teacher, to a tutor working with the students, are to become familiar with these plans. The differences really fall in, a 504 plan can be granted to a student with a disability and/or medical diagnosis. So, 504 plans really cover a greater scope of conditions and disabilities. When you have a 504 plan, you're really looking more at accommodations within the classroom and some limited services, but really, it's when you don't need quite as much as you do when you are on the IEP. When you have an IEP, you're really bound to the specific classifications, and we look to identify our students and provide them with specialized instruction and related services. So, the services under the IEP plan are much more comprehensive. And just kind of thinking how they relate, both plans, we have to reevaluate every three years to ensure that our students are still qualifying or in need of the services, and our goal is always to make our students as independent as possible. So, we always celebrate when we can decrease what a student needs, decrease the accommodations they might require, or even, as I like to call it, graduate out of special education or 504, and move on to just being a general education student. So, special education, for those who may not know, really is twofold. So, a lot of times, someone may say, well, the student has autism, they need an IEP, or the student has autism and they need special education. But really, the student has to have an identified disability and then require specialized instruction in order to have access to the general education curriculum and in order to be successful. So, we have a lot of students within our walls of our buildings who have disabilities that some of us may be aware of, and some we may not even know that they have, but they're able to function without that specialized instruction. So, just because a student has a disability doesn't necessarily mean they receive special education. However, if that disability impacts their ability to function in the classroom and they require that extra support, then that's where our IEPs come in. And typically, our specially designed instruction is a teacher working with those students, typically a special education teacher, but we also have paraeducators and tutors who work with our students, and then our classroom teachers are also responsible for their goals and objectives. So, we may have a room where there's a para and a teacher, and they may kind of swap and work with a student in order to give them what they need. So, our general education teachers also deliver that specialized instruction at times. So, really, IDEA, the Individuals with Disability Act, is really comprised of two parts. The first part being free and appropriate public education, and the second part, in the least restrictive environment for our students. So, really, the first part is, no matter what the disability that a student has, we are to educate them free of cost in order for them to access the learning that they need to make progress. And then, their least restrictive environment is really the environment that gives them most access to their, their peers. But as I'm going to explain on the next slide, or in one more slide, but don't go yet. Oh, sorry. Back to the FAP, yep. One more, I think we're. No, FAP, sorry. All right, so, just reiterating that, this is where sometimes I think, you know, our students within our school building walls in Windsor, we're providing them the education that we do, but we also have the students that require a greater level of support and care and often have to leave our district and go to special schools. And so, in that case, the parents and the families do have access to those schools and the supports that they require without them having to pay out of pocket. You know, obviously, the placement has to be reasonable. A parent can't just ask for anything. It has to be appropriate. The out-of-district schools must be accredited and approved by the state. We're required to provide FAP from preschool all the way to high school and beyond. So, we have students who stay with us until they're 22, their 22nd birthday, and if they require transition services and they live in Windsor and those services are required to be received at River Street, we're responsible for ensuring that they get those services. And then, those facilities, whether it's a magnet school, charter school, in-district school, or outplacement school, we are required by law to ensure that they are providing an appropriate program. So, we sometimes come into the situation where we have a student in a school and it's no longer an appropriate setting, and we have to change, because it's no longer a place that can give them an IEP that meets their needs. And for least restrictive environment, you know, to the greatest extent possible, we want to educate our students with disabilities in our classrooms with our non-disabled peers. So, we want all of our kids to have access to their neighborhood school or the school that they're supposed to attend in order to be with, you know, the students that live maybe a few streets down. We try really hard to include them in as much general education time as possible and with those typical peers. And I think it's for many reasons. You know, that access is, you know, just ethically, I think, appropriate, that you're not put somewhere else just because you have a disability, obviously, but also, being with the typical peers is a place where students really can learn a great deal, and having them in our neighborhood schools and in the general education setting, we have very high expectations, and we expect them to be, you know, closing the gap to meet benchmark. They also learn a great deal from their peers, whether it's academic, or social, or even communication. So, being around typical peers is extremely helpful to our students and allows for them to make that growth. With that being said, least restrictive environment is not always the classroom, not always Paquonic or OE. One example that I wanted to bring up is if you had a student who is deaf, their neighborhood school would not be the least restrictive environment because they would be unable to communicate with any of their peers. So in those cases, we have to do right by those students and we send them to a place where they can have access to peers that are going to help them communicate, engage, and be social. And that's, we can move on? All right. And so the planning and placement team, PPT, it's one of those words that's tossed around, is really a meeting that we hold to discuss evaluations, determine eligibility, develop an IEP, look at that IEP, review it, revise it. The goal of the meeting really is to be collaborative and to talk about the students' successes as well as their concerns. And I try to emphasize successes because I think it's really important that we celebrate what our children can do, no matter their ability, and really build upon those successes and I think work with the family to celebrate those successes. And sometimes they're very small, other times we see a great deal of growth. But I think it's important, and we stress this to our staff, that we should be celebrating successes and talking about areas of strength as well as those areas of concern. These meetings take place at least once a year, but in many cases, we meet more often. That could be for good reasons and it could be for the fact that students are struggling and we don't want that struggle to continue so we come back to the table. The team does consist of building administrators, parents, general education teachers, special education teachers, related service providers, and other specialists. And that's really because we want a whole team approach. What a general teacher may know about a student may be different from what a special education teacher is seeing, or maybe there's a strategy they're using. And then our administrators, sped teachers, related service providers all have great insight. And most importantly, I always say, the parents know their child the most. And so having their impact, their feedback, their participation, I think, is crucial, even if they may not be familiar with the way special education works or education in general, they will share things with you that will help you, I think, form a relationship with a student, maybe build upon their strengths, or maybe understand why they're having certain challenges in school. The IEP is the actual document that is created as a result of a PPT meeting. And so it gets a little confusing because in every state besides Connecticut, they call it an IEP meeting. We call it PPT, so we have the PPT and the IEP. But the IEP is really just a detailed document that takes everything we've talked about during our PPT and kind of memorializes it so everyone's on the same page. It lists the student's strengths, their weaknesses, results from testing. It tells anyone that looks at it what the child should be working on, for their goals and objectives. It outlines what kind of accommodations and modifications we should be giving them as well as their service times. And so when we pass out our IEPs and our 504 plans, we expect that our staff reviews them. We ask that our special education staff makes themselves available to any other staff in the buildings in order to answer questions. And then we also provide them to our substitutes in the building so that they can be aware of what a student needs. The different buildings do it differently. And whenever possible, especially when a student has a great deal of needs, we do try to have the special education teacher connect with the sub in order to make sure the sub knows what to expect and what things maybe they shouldn't get upset about if they see or hear. In those cases, whenever we have support staff in the classrooms, they also are an asset to our substitute teachers because they're able to help them when it comes to what can be done to help that child. But the expectation is anyone working with the student does have access to the document and the information so that they can follow it.
So we have a child find responsibility to identify and to identify any students requiring special education from birth to age 22 living in the town of Windsor. This obviously includes the students who are attending school at Windsor Public Schools. It also attends, it includes students who are attending non-public schools or magnet schools, students who are not yet three or who are three and four and not yet attending our preschool program, and students who are homeschooled. Children in the Birth to Three system receive their special education services through that Birth to Three agency. We're provided that referral information shortly after the child's second birthday, most times if it's available and if the family has consented to that. At age two and a half, if the family has not consented to share the information with us, we still get the child's name, date of birth, and address so that we can initiate our own referral. We just don't have all of the documents that came over from Birth to Three. Students who are referred by their parents, if they are close to their third birthday or three or four years old, would be evaluated by our team. Children who are homeschooled at any age would also be evaluated by our team. We would offer an IEP if the child was found eligible who is homeschooled, but that is only provided if the child enrolls in one of our schools or a school that we provide services to. We do not provide direct service to children who are homeschooled, but we do identify them and offer an IEP. So this whole process is coordinated by the pupil services department and it is a team process, as Christina mentioned, involving lots of different people on that team. So our process starts with referral and goes to evaluation. If a child is determined eligible, then we do develop that IEP, as Christina mentioned, based on the needs of the child. And based on that IEP, we determine what the most appropriate placement would be. Then we engage in the instruction that we're delivering all the time and we progress monitor that instruction. So very often, we might have a goal or an objective for a student that they meet partway through before their annual review and we come back to the table. When we've progress monitored and seen that, you know, this goal is no longer appropriate, we come back to the table. Or if something is no longer appropriate in their plan, we would come back to PPT to revise that. We do meet minimum once a year at the annual review where we take a look at all of that progress monitoring and instruction that's been done in the past year, the child's progress towards their goals and objectives, how they're performing in the general education environment, and make a plan for the coming year. What are the goals that we're looking for that child to accomplish in the next year's time? And what services and accommodations do we need to put in place in order to make that happen? Every three years as well, any child who's receiving services under an IEP has a triennial reevaluation. So that is federal law that we need to reevaluate and redetermine eligibility every three years. So regardless of what the child's disability is, every three years, we're doing a full evaluation to redetermine that eligibility. Then that cycles around to the next IEP. It also gives us some additional information. You know, we, we don't necessarily evaluate between that three years, although we can. But when we do that triennial, three-year evaluation, we learn more about where the student is currently functioning and things that may have changed since their last full evaluation. So when we're determining eligibility, the State Department of Education does provide guidelines for us in identifying special education categories. And we'll talk about those specific categories in a few minutes. We do look at the interventions that have been completed already and the data resulting from those interventions, as well as the information coming from families. And it is, it is something that is determined at a PPT with multiple parties involved. The parents are a big part of that team, the teachers, both special education and general education teachers, those who have evaluated the students, the administrator, the student, if they're old enough, and any other individuals who can speak to the child. A lot of times, families will ask us to, will invite in outside providers who may know more information about the child.
So the next slide is in regards to specially designed instruction. Specially designed instruction, it's needed for several reasons. Number one, to address the unique needs of each child and to ensure access to the general education curriculum. And we do that so that the student can meet the educational standards that do apply to all children. Specially designed instruction does not look the same for any one child. A lot of times, it comes down to the evaluations that were conducted, be it formal and/or informal. And as progress monitoring is conducted, the specially designed instruction is tiered accordingly. So one student may not have exactly the same type and/or model of differentiation that another student would then have. Parents can learn about their rights and resources through receiving documents in PPT. Documents can include the procedural safeguards. They are offered to parents, excuse me, at their child's IEP and/or 504 meetings at least once per school year. They also receive the Parents Guide to Special Education in Connecticut, the IEP Manual. They also have access to the Connecticut Parent Advocacy Center. And we also offer parent information nights. You can see there, we have several dates and the topics include everything from the introduction to the new IEP. We are operating within CTSEDS this school year, so the IEPs are looking a bit different. So it's important that parents are in the know, as Christina stated, that they're a valuable member to the team at PPT. So we want to make sure they have a full understanding of what they're receiving for their child, especially if the document does look a little bit different. We're also discussing secondary transition, connecting to community resources, and home behavioral supports for learners with autism. There will be further information forthcoming about these parent nights. So the role of a special education teacher is multifaceted. I think I say that, you know, multifaceted, let's just say. So they deliver specialized instruction based on the student's IEP. And again, specialized instruction can be in many areas. It's not just limited to academic areas. It could be functional areas, it could be transitional areas. So when I say functional, I might mean social skills, I might behavioral strategies, or even play skills. Okay? And then as far as transition, that might be employment skills, independent living skills, or vocational skills. Special education teachers provide specialized instruction per the needs of each student. So that may look different, again, per student need. It might be individually with a student, it might be in a small group, in like, for example, in a resource room, or maybe pushing into a general education classroom. Special education teachers serve as case manager. So some roles might include the oversight of timelines, facilitating PPTs, writing IEPs, completion of the IEP paperwork, family communication, and et cetera. Essentially, a lot of collaboration, consideration, and data collection in applying said collaboration and data collection to the student's needs. So continuing with the role of a special education teacher, as I mentioned, it's imperative that they are collaborating closely with not just the general education staff, but other providers, for example, the related service providers, parents, to ensure the effective implementation of the IEP. They do conduct ongoing progress monitoring of student performance on IEP goals and objectives. As Ms. Bohm stated, the importance of progress monitoring is to ensure that the IEP is updated and appropriate per the needs of the child. For example, we would not wait a full year to update the IEP if the data is indicating that we need to tweak the goals and objectives, decrease the environment, or increase the restriction of the environment. Also, the importance to formally assess students using standardized achievement measures to identify those areas of strength and concern. And it's not just those formal assessments, it's also those informal assessments. The role of a paraeducator is again multifaceted. They may be leading small groups or of individual instruction that's designed by the teacher. They may be gathering materials, providing assistance for personal care and/or other physical needs. They may be facilitating interactions or social skills between students, making accommodations or modifications under the teacher's guidance, assisting students in following directions, maintaining focus, prompting students, following the behavioral intervention plans. Essentially, they assist with delivering specialized instruction as outlined in the IEP to build and facilitate a student's independence, which is the overall goal for all child, children. So related services, I used that term earlier. Related services are supportive services designed to enable a child with a disability to receive a free and appropriate public education as described in the child's individualized education program. Related services may be required to assist a student with a disability to benefit from special education. Related services can include social work, orientation and mobility services, physical and occupational therapy, speech-language-audiology services, specialized transportation, and/or school health services. So pupil services, you'll see a list here. The first is the board-certified behavioral analyst, so I just want to talk a little bit about what that role is. It's also known as a BCBA, is the acronym that we use. So a BCBA assesses behavior to determine function. Part of this is to determine the antecedent, in other words, what occurs prior to the behavior, then to identify the said behavior and determine the best approach to redirect and/or address the behavior. The BCBA plays a role in developing a behavioral intervention plan thereafter. And a component of this is ensuring that there's proper data collection procedures in place. Physical and occupational therapy, school psychological services, social work services, school nurse services, school counselors, speech-language pathologists and audiology services, assistive technology and interpreting services. So interpreting services are services that are used to translate for families whose primary language is not English. The service would not just be limited to PPT, it may also include team meetings, parent phone calls, and et cetera. Essentially, ensuring equal access for families to communicate openly with the school. We're utilizing those interpreting services.
So this is where we were going to take a natural pause because then we talk about special ed more specifically in Windsor. So we're happy to take your questions. If not, I can just start to get down onto this list of questions from Mr. Panos.
Any questions at this time? Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. Do students ever move out of EEP, I'm sorry, IEP?
Remove, are removed?
Like within a year or two years?
Yeah, so I think this was also one of Mr. Panos's questions. So when we do see that a student is being successful and they no longer require specialized instruction, or if they're on a 504 plan, they no longer require accommodations and modifications, what we typically do is at their PPT meeting, we try to decrease their services to a bare minimum. So for a few months, they're functioning on services that are, you know, very, very little support, so we can see how they're doing. We then plan their reevaluation and at which time, if their performance is age-appropriate, if they're not requiring specialized instruction, and if they've done well without the support, we do exit them from special education. And we do exit students with learning disabilities, we exit students with autism, we really exited, exit students with all different disabilities. There are some students who do require an IEP up until the age of 22, but our goal is to exit a student when they are ready. And through the years, as much as possible, to decrease the level of support that they are getting because we know, you know, if they're going to be college-bound, going to a trade school, starting employment, they're not going to have someone who's going to be there to support them the way we do. So we try to make the services less and less as they get older to foster that independence. And so, you know, that is our goal, to exit those students, and it does occur.
Thank you.
Mr. Helleck?
Um, thank you. I'm going back to the PPT meetings. I'm just curious when, when a student is, is getting older, you know, in, in a high school and, you know, looking to, to, um, transition within the next like two, three years, if they are, if they are included in these meetings as well?
Great question. See, we think we do such a good job and you guys get us each time. So typically, towards the end of Sage Park, students do become members of their PPT team if they are able. We do have students that, you know, cannot advocate for themselves, but we do sometimes even try to bring them in for parts of the meeting. But typically, starting towards the end of eighth grade and definitely in ninth grade, they do they do become a team member of the PPT, and they provide feedback. I was in a meeting years ago where a fourth grader insisted on coming, and her parents were comfortable. And she sat there, and she listened, and she provided feedback. So we do encourage it when it's appropriate. And at the high school level, they are active team members, and they should have been on that slide. So thank you.
Thank you.
Darling? Sorry, I have a couple of quick questions. So you talked about preparing the parents for the meeting about learning about their rights. Do they receive that information prior to the PPT meeting?
The procedural safeguards will be sent... So a long time ago, we used to send them with the invitation. Now, what our practice typically is, when we do have a Google Calendar invite, because most of our meetings are virtual, the attachments that are going to be needed for the meeting are often added to that. Other special ed teachers will put the link to the procedural safeguards right in their agenda as they send it home in advance of the meeting. And sometimes, you know, we will just send a PDF to the parent. So it's pretty, it's happening virtually more and more instead of the hard procedural safeguards, but they are provided to them. And sometimes, when a parent does not understand something, or maybe doesn't agree to something, we do do a good job about pointing to, because it's a hefty document. So we try to point them to the part where maybe they would want to review, or they have a question, and, or, you know, we'll say page 17 if, you know, you need more information. Or again, if we don't agree, here's a way for you to, we can dispute this disagreement.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Can you just walk me through, so I'm a parent, I have a student who gets a PPT, who gets an IEP. How quickly does my student receive those services from the signing, from the process of even, let's say, the PPT meeting to the IEP to the service provision?
Yeah, so the state of Connecticut requires us, from the date of referral, to either find the student ineligible, or if we find them eligible, 45 school days. So by the 45th school day, they are supposed to have an IEP implemented. So our timeline really runs like this. We get the referral, we process it as quickly as we can, but we need to give parents five days' notice of a meeting. So within 10 school days, we're meeting for that first PPT and getting consent. Our teams usually have about 20 to 25 school days to do their evaluations, which sometimes is good. Other times can be crazy because we're doing like eight, you know, different tests, and we don't want to pull the kid constantly. But within 35 days, we're coming back to PPT to make that determination. And then by day 45, we're implementing an IEP. Now, sometimes there's things that happen that we can... For example, if a student's out for five days with the flu, the state allows us to add five days to our timeline. If the evaluations are taking longer than expected, we may do a shorter implementation time. Instead of giving them that, you know, 15-day implementation, we may do eight days if the parent agrees. And then there's other cases where we have to extend that evaluation timeline specifically for learning disability. When we don't have the data, we need to make the determination.
Other questions? Okay.
Do you, I can hit on some of Mr. Panos's instead of waiting till the end?
Yeah. Let's see.
So I can, how about I just kind of go through?
Related Services, related services, could you just give that one, the second page, 10 page?
All right, let me, why don't I just, I'm going to briefly go through just what I made notes on, if that's okay, from what you gave me?
Right, I think, I see many of these have answered.
Yeah, we answered many. I just wanted to add to your number one about interpreting services. One of the ways that happens in the school buildings would be if we had a student who was deaf and required an interpreter. So I just wanted to add that to what Chris already said. He answered your question about the BCBA. You asked about the LD being tested out, and we did talk about that. You had a question about, and this goes back to one of the slides Mr. Bailey did, is special ed tier three? Special ed is not tier three. So if we did have a concern about a student's functioning, and it wasn't a blatant disability, sometimes we receive a student and we just know that they require an IEP because it's such a great impact. But if we were questioning, for example, a learning disability, what would happen is we would first, of course, the student would have access to the tier-one instruction. If they weren't making progress, they would then be in tier-two for, you know, amount of time, maybe eight weeks, 12 weeks. We would be collecting data.
Not a special ed program.
That's not special ed, yep. If tier-two is not working for them, then we would move them to tier-three, which would be more individualized instruction perhaps. And again, we would do that for a set amount of time, collect data. If tier-three is not helping them make progress and they're continuing to struggle, at that time, we would make a referral. So special ed is almost like a tier-four. It's above those three.
Okay, thank you.
And then you did ask about, does, we never said that a special ed teacher teaches.
Yeah, oh, you did.
Yeah, especially when we say administer specially-designed instruction, that's really them utilizing the skills and their background to teach the students. And I think that's all for your first part.
Right. I did have a few questions about what is called developmentally delayed. I don't know when you want to answer.
We're gonna, I think, everything that I just answered covers what we've done, and the rest will be after we finish, which may answer some of your questions, or then I can come back to them.
Yep, I think you answered the number 10 anyway. Yep, on related services, you included the special ed, I mean, the speech, you know, you know what happened.
You should know this stuff. You live with a related service provider.
I had an expert consultant.
All right, so if you guys are good, we'll continue.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so the next couple of slides are really talking about what our special education staff in Windsor Public Schools looks like, what that breakdown looks like by building and by area. So you can see on this table, the four elementary schools are represented with the number of providers we have in each of these categories. You'll see some differences. For example, there are fewer speech and language pathologists as students get a little bit older. And that's because of what Christina had talked about before. As students get a little bit older, we're building that independence, and they require less services. You'll also notice that the number of special education preschool teachers is significantly higher at Paquonic School than Oliver Ellsworth. We did have four at each building, and just moved two of our preschool classrooms this year to Paquonic School just because of the way the numbers fell in the building and some crowding that was happening there. The next slide talks about Sage Park, the high school, our off-site programs, as well as our out-of-district employees. We do have a special education teacher that services our out-of-district students. She does not provide the specialized instruction, this is, I'm sorry, at magnet schools. She doesn't provide the specialized instruction at magnet schools, but does all the evaluations and the PPTs, and case manages all of our students who are at magnet schools and at non-public schools. We also have a school psychologist who services students who are in those types of schools. Again, not providing direct service, but doing evaluations, participating in meetings, and that type of thing. And this slide talks about some of our district-wide positions. These are people that we don't need a whole person in any one building necessarily. So our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, and our BCBAs work across multiple buildings, with our physical therapist working in all of the buildings in Windsor.
So for the data that we're going to present, we looked at the past three school years. And the data is part of the Special Education Data Application and Collection System from the state of Connecticut. On October 1st, we send them our data, which they audit and use in their state reporting. All this data can be found on EdSite. The data for this year is not available as of yet. So if you look at the past three years, our numbers for special education have been pretty steady. And then unofficially, to date today, we have 712 students. So we're still pretty consistent to where we've been. And so we will have an official October 1st count, but we don't have that information yet. If we look here, this is our special education prevalence rate, so the number of students identified compared to our whole population. Again, we've been pretty steady at that 18 or so percent. The state percentage is less, at 15.6, 15.9, and 16.3 percent. However, they seem to be growing at a higher rate. Where in the past three, four, five years, we're more steady around that 18 percent. If you look at this slide here, here are the categories for which our students have IEPs. Some of the disabilities are much more prevalent within our building walls, others we rarely see. But they are disabilities for which students can get their IEP. Mr. Panos pointed out that I had a typo. I had specific learning disability on there twice. And I did not have speech and language impairment. Speech and language impairment is a disability that a student can have their IEP for. I also wanted to point out, number four, emotional disability, was formerly known as emotional disturbance. We advocated very hard as directors and special education administrators to change that. That connotation of disturbance was just very difficult. And so emotional disability, I think, is a much more sensitive way to look at students who may be experiencing some emotional, various emotional difficulties. And so as of this July, that was changed. So emotional disability is now the classification. All right, what we're going to do is we're really just going to highlight some of the disabilities that we do see most frequently within our building walls, starting with specific learning disability, which I think we do see the most of. Every single disability on here, I think, is kind of like a spectrum. I know we say autism spectrum, but, you know, even a student with a specific learning disability, it can really be, no two students are alike. So when you have a specific learning disability, it really impacts your ability to use language, spoken or written, and your ability to really think, speak, read, write, spell, or do mathematical calculations despite having cognitive, very strong cognitive abilities. And so we may have a student who is, you know, above grade level in math, but has a specific learning disability in reading. We may have a student who has a specific learning disability in all areas. The impact of their specific learning disability is really different. But when we look at someone with a specific learning disability, we typically rule out other conditions such as visual, hearing, motor disabilities, and intellectual disability. We also try to rule out things like their environmental, cultural, or economic disadvantage. And when we do do our initial evaluations, we often look at those factors whenever looking at any disability because we don't want to classify someone with a disability and give them an IEP if they really don't require one, and if it may just be something like, you know, they're a second language or they have just moved to the States or something like that. So our prevalence and number of students with specific learning disability is listed here. So we've seen a slight increase over the past three years. And right now, we have 187 students with a specific learning disability, and 21 students who have a specific learning disability with a dyslexia classification. And the requirements and guidelines for identifying students with specific learning disabilities actually changed on July 1st. And so we are still working to acclimate ourselves to that criteria. And one of those changes does make a greater distinction in, and specifies how we're identifying our students with dyslexia. So the guidelines and worksheets and everything that we have to do has changed. So that's why I just wanted to point out that it's now broken down to the 187 and the 21. But if you add them together, we're right around that 200 number. Another health impairment, I think, kind of is in some ways self-explanatory. It's something related to a student's health that may require that specialized instruction. So it could be their strength, vitality, alertness. And one of the greatest areas that we see in other health impairment is attentional weaknesses. So whether it's an attentional deficit a student has or a hyperactive disorder. But it is not limited to that. We could have students with Tourette's Syndrome, diabetes, epilepsy, other conditions that have impacted them, lead poisoning we put on there, that have just such a great impact that they're not able to access the curriculum and require specialized instruction. And we have seen some very unique profiles with students with medical needs. And this is typically where we use our nursing supervisor, our consulting physician to the district, and also often the children's outside medical providers to assist us in helping these students. And then, like I said, the OHIADHD is a more common classification, both for the IEP and the 504 plan. And again, no two students are alike, but they do share similar characteristics of whether it's attentional deficits or having that kind of hyperactive behavior in the classroom. So our numbers here are, have increased somewhat, 22 students since 2019, 2020. And again, we're at a higher rate than the state. Just so that we know where we're starting this school year, we currently have 161 students under this classification. 161. So a little bit lower than years past. So autism is a more global developmental delay that impacts verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and academic performance. Generally, a pediatrician may find that a student has autism before the age of three. However, this is not always true. And as I mentioned, it's a spectrum. And so we do have students with autism that do not require 504 plans or IEPs. And then we have students with autism who are extremely impacted. And so we, when we're evaluating them, we look at, are they mild, moderate, or severe? And that helps us to understand kind of what they may need. Again, some students are much higher in their verbal ability, and we have students with autism who are nonverbal, and they may be 22 or 21 years old. Often, it's diagnosed, and the students receive birth-to-three services. So the birth-to-three, they come to us, it's already, they've already gotten a ton of support in those first three years. But there are situations where we do evaluate, and then we give them a school diagnosis. Often, parents take our evaluations to their pediatricians, who then see or do a medical diagnosis and help the family determine what other interventions may be needed outside of the school building. We do consult with our families in all areas, but especially when it comes to autism, providing support and helping families access other things they can get because insurances do cover things like ABA services for some students. And so we're always trying to build that bridge so we can help parents and teach them what's working at school so they can then implement it at home. And then just some other characteristics that you may have heard about before that are more typical, repetitive activities, stereotype behaviors, maybe lining a train up in a row, or, you know, hand movements they do at certain times, having difficulty with environmental change or change in daily routines, and then having some kind of sensory responses that are atypical. However, again, I want to caution you that, you know, we know students with autism that have never exhibited repetitive or stereotype movements. Maybe they did when they're younger, but they've kind of grown out or learned ways to more appropriately play. And here is our prevalence rate for autism. And interestingly, this is an area where we went 95, 99, 95. And our current number is 103. And I think a pattern that we're seeing is more students coming into kindergarten with severe deficits and, like, nonverbal communication. I'm not saying it's always autism, but I think some of these students were home for a great amount of time and did not have social, you know, access to peers. And also, maybe were home with not another sibling. So I think some of the milder things maybe were not picked up by parents. And now that they're here in school, we are seeing kind of an increase in this area, and an increase of students at an older age that are nonverbal, that did not possibly get the services earlier that could have been very beneficial. And we feel that it is a kind of a COVID issue, that if the kids were in more public settings sooner, some of these deficits may have been picked up. I think even, and students were seeing pediatricians for... I think even, and students were seeing pediatricians virtually. So there's something a pediatrician may have picked up on that, you know, wasn't picked up on a, on a Google call. So that is an area that we've seen an increase, but I think when we look at it, we're not super surprised. You know, unfortunately, COVID has impacted our population, you know, a lot, so. So a developmental delay, Mr. Panos had a lot of questions about this one, and it is a little confusing, I have to say. I even had to ask Amy a question before I talked about it to make sure I wasn't giving misinformation. But a developmental delay is a disability category we typically give our students who are six or younger. So actually, it's up until their sixth birthday. And so they have a delay in any of the listed areas, so physical, cognitive, communication, social, emotional, adaptive. So they come to us, and we know that there are these deficits. However, we're not maybe sure what the disability is, or we want to give them time under an IEP, under the classification of developmental delay, before we go back to PPT and determine that it's another disability. So typically, our students who are developmentally delayed are only three, age three, age four, age five. And by age six, either what we've done in our preschool and kindergarten program has caught them up in these areas, and they are dismissed from special education, or when we reevaluate them, which we are required to do before that sixth birthday, we look at the data we've collected over those three years, and we determine what the actual disability might be. So it may become a speech and language impairment, it may be OHIADDADHD. It may be autism, maybe we weren't, we didn't have enough data to support autism when they were three, but those three years they've been with us, we've collected the data, and we can now do that classification. And we're not going to talk about an intellectual disability, but we do have students with intellectual disabilities. And typically, they have an IQ of sixty-nine or lower, and then deficits in their adaptive functioning. Developmental delay and intellectual disability are different. Some of our developmentally delayed students may end up being, receiving their IEP as an intellectual disability, because once they turn six, we do the IQ testing, we collect data, we determine they qualify under intellectual disability. However, not all of our developmentally delayed students are intellectually disabled. And just trying to think if there was anything else I can answer quickly while we're on this topic. So developmental delay isn't necessarily rare. A ton of our preschool, and even some of our K students are under that classification. But district-wide, we don't have a huge number because it is primarily in those, or it is definitely in those young grades. If you have more questions, Mr. Panos will get to them later. And then the state does not collect data on developmental disability, but we can get you that data. I probably, no, I didn't write the number we have in district right now, but I think it's a, we have fifty kids in preschool, and it's a chunk of those fifty kids.
It's a good percentage of those.
Yeah, so I would probably guess, my guess would be forty to forty-five, but don't count me. You know, we can get you the numbers. We have all that data. And emotional disability really is when a student exhibits one or more of the following characteristics for a long period of time. So we do know that some of our students struggle emotionally, teenagers have a few tough months, maybe someone passes away, and our students have a hard time coping. And, you know, emotionally, they're not in a good place. However, really for the emotional disability, you need to have a prolonged period of emotional concerns. So some of the classifications include their inability to learn despite having, you know, strong intellectual capacity. They're unable to maintain appropriate relationships. They may have inappropriate feelings or behaviors under normal circumstances. Some may have a mood of, pervasive mood of unhappiness or depression, have physical symptoms or fears associated with school. So a lot of those students, we may think of as having depression, anxiety, post-traumatic stress disorder, maybe some comment in their history that just makes school or functioning difficult, and/or relational problems that they've experienced probably before that they, they have come to school. And so if we look at the data for this population, we're at fifty-eight students this school year. So it is a smaller chunk of students, but it is a chunk of students that often requires a lot of support, both academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally.
All right. So the next slide just talks about the number of outplaced students who receive special education in Windsor. This is a snapshot from the excess costs from March first. You'll see that that number has been steady for the last three years in the, in the sixties. Our current number is fifty students who are out of district place right now. That number tends to go up during the school year as the, as the year goes on. We'll get that number that's comparable to these numbers in March on March. The next slide talks about students who receive special ed and related services who attend our magnet, like, attend magnet schools who live in Windsor, who attend the non, our non-pub schools. That number has remained fairly consistent over the last couple of years. You'll see the downward, a slight downward trend last year. Currently, we have eighty-six students who receive services who are attending those magnet schools, and we have five students currently in the referral process that we are. The next graphic is just a visual for the idea of a continuum of services. This really brings us back to those, that idea of the least restrictive environment. You'll see the continuum on the left there is the general education classroom. That would be, as Christina talked about, kids in their classroom, with their peers, in their homeschools, receiving no services, no aides, nothing like that. The next step in that continuum would be provide some support in that general education classroom, and then moving further towards the right would becoming more, more services, more supports for students, maybe pulling them into a resource to provide some services, maybe a specialized program in their homeschool. Then moving further through the continuum would be maybe moving them from their homeschool to another school in district that would provide more specialized instruction all the way throughout. Our goal is always educate students in the least restrictive setting that they can get their needs met. We wouldn't move a kid out of their regular classroom if we can service them with those accommodations and appropriate support. So that's just a nice visual. I always think about that when I'm thinking about a student. We wouldn't make three jumps right to the, to the right without trying things that are less restricted. And then the, the next slide is just really describes that. It's programming based on what is needed, what is developmentally appropriate for that student in that moment. Students can change, right? Their needs can change. So students can require more services or less services as time goes on. Our goal would always be to obviously look at those services, evaluate them, see if we can move students back into less restricted settings. We do have a belief system that our students with exceptionalities can achieve, right? Academically, socially, behaviorally, we want to give them as many opportunities as possible to achieve. And it's critical to program for students based on what they need. Individualize those plans, not just place them into a program. And so.
All right. So this is not on the PowerPoint I sent you, but I figured it wouldn't hurt to share it. We're hiring if anyone's interested. You know, I try to recruit anywhere I go. Danielle will laugh at me. There was, I think, a welcome principal meeting, and I was trying to get the teachers that came to work ESY. I'm like, what are you doing? You getting bored yet? You want to come work for us? But we're, we're really exhausting. I mean, we have social media, we're reaching out to colleges, we're reaching out to agencies to contract staff. We're putting it on our own LinkedIn's. Gianna has done a lot of work with us, some even paid advertising, Connecticut REAP. There's now a Connecticut teaching, like, classified thing. Anything that we can think of, we are trying, but we are still short all these positions. OE special ed teacher, Clover special ed teacher, JFK Esser special ed teacher, Sage Park Esser special ed teacher, and Para educators district-wide. You know, I, we're feeling a little hopeless just because we lose sleep every night knowing that there are students in our district that are not getting services. We have shuffled things around where our certain students, teachers are taking on more kids so that we're, we're moving tutors. I called every retired person that, for the past five years, and I got two of them to come back. But we, we're desperate. We need these staff because ultimately, it's really negatively impacting our students. And they're young, and this is when they need these services and interventions, and when they don't have them, you know, it causes a lot of more, you know, domino effect. It's also causing our staff to work, you know, triple overtime. We have amazing staff that work really hard and want to help kids, but we are definitely making their lives difficult. And there are hundreds of openings in the state, and we don't want to push them out of our district because we are asking them to do too much. And so our staff retention has not been the greatest. We're working hard to kind of build their capacity, celebrate them. But anything that anybody can do, anyone that you guys know, if you have friends that are retired, someone who's willing to work two days a week, we're willing to be flexible in any way possible. And then also, we're looking for paraeducators all the time. We are fully staffed. The next day, we're not, no longer fully staffed. And so it's, it's tough because, especially in some of those one-to-one situations when we don't have a para, we have to make shifts, so everyone ends up feeling that impact. So I figured it wouldn't hurt to put this on here tonight and just advertise one more time because we are feeling very desperate. And we also have some, I, you know, options for alternative route to certification. So if anyone's interested, we can explore those with you as well. There are programs in the state that allow someone to start a program and only really earn like twelve credits, and then come work for us as a durational shortage employee. So thank you, and we'll take more questions.
Hey, questions? Ms. Cantor?
Have you reached out to any of the colleges?
Yes.
And I would do it monthly, and any time after I would, you know.
Yeah, we do reach out to them. We ask them to post. They post on their Facebook, they post on their group. But, you know, it, it hasn't, it's, it's been tough. I mean, we, that's something I used to do. I was telling these guys, like, when I was supervisor, in like three years, I hired three people. You know, we didn't have nearly as much need, so you could call a college, and they would have someone who was ready maybe to do a durational shortage or come out. We are, we're trying, but thank you.
Mr. Lockhart?
One. One, notice on the chart, no list, number of paraed.
No, I'm, our, we're budgeted for a hundred and five paraeducators for this school year. We're right about at that number, but because we have not been able to fill them at times, we're under that number right now. But we've worked really hard to decrease because last year we were.
But your budget of five, you need.
We're in a tough, we're in a. We're in a tough space because we do have some students at the secondary level where we're really trying to get them off the paraeducator support because they are doing so well. In order to recycle those paraeducators, we are seeing the need for paraeducator support at OE and Paquonic at a high level, just because we are getting a lot of students who are very impacted.
If I could just ask a related question on, on the paras. Approximately how many are one-on-one paras versus somebody who's in a room with two children? I assume that's decided at the IEP.
We could get you that number for sure, but at the lower level, again, like Paquonic, OE, when the students are just coming to us, have not learned any of the skills, we do see a greater number of one-to-one paraeducators. By the time that they get to like a Sage Park and a Windsor High School, we really try, unless the student has a severe medical condition, to not have any of our students be one-on-one. We call them like eyes on, or they may shuffle with paras, or they might go to a science class with three students and one adult. And as they get into the high school, it's, it's again, less and less. It might be one adult to five students. We could definitely get you the number, but I don't know offhand. I do know at the elementary level, it's, I think Jen, I've heard her say this, I think every, of her fourteen JFK paras all are one-to-one right now.
Back to you, sir.
All right. Number of autistic individuals, um, could be COVID impact. See that book a little bit more, so it'd be something that we. And finally, I'm on the, where this magnet. We currently have eighty-six, and we have five in the referral process. Out of those eighty-six, are we providing the services to all eighty-six? Are those services being provided by the school or the rest, and then they backfill us? And so is there a way we can be, change their financial arrangements some way slow?
Yeah, so unfortunately, that is the case. We are responsible for their IEP, which means we send people to hold the meetings, the case manage, the problem solve when there are issues. We often have parents that end up communicating with us because there is some frustrations with the magnet and charters, but the specialized instruction and the related services that they get on a day-to-day basis, and their paraeducator support and whatnot is billed to us. So we get monthly bills from CREC, and we get a bill from Hartford two times a year. I taught the special education teacher, Erica Blakewell, where when we get those bills, we look at them and make sure, you know, they're not charging us any extra. But it is very expensive to provide the services, and then it's hard because you don't have the oversight. So for instance, if a parent at a magnet school makes a state complaint, I have to process that state complaint, but I can't go to the school and tell them what to do. Or if they're doing something wrong, I can't control, so it's very tough. We have brought a great deal of students back home over the years. You know, in the, probably at this point, hundreds, and they tend to be our students with more severe needs because the magnet schools don't have the programming to help those students. And so then they come back to our district programs, or the fact that we just, and even though they bill us, we tend to have way more resources than they do in those buildings.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I brought those out because, of course, we're about to go into the finance process. So I wanted to make sure I highlighted that amongst the group. So when people are like, well, let's cut this, let's cut that. I'm the only one up here saying, let's add this, let's add that. We're at a point now, we're coming out of COVID, special funds are going to be expiring at this academic year, and we're going to have to make some, some really moral decisions as a community if we're going to put some teeth behind special ed, improvement, pension, and making sure that we keep the best of the best. Not going to be that type of budget where you just push through and hope for the best. We're going to have to make some courageous decisions. If that means getting voted off, because you put something out there outrageous, so be it. But at the end of the day, we're coming out of COVID, and we, the same old same old, just not going to kick it, kick the budget. Thank you.
Mr. Wallaston?
Yeah, my only question is just, how do you guys determine or find out if an outplacement of school or program is unfit to their student's IEP or their 504?
Typically, things are just going really bad. So we might have a kid at high school who hasn't gone to the placement for a week, and clearly, they're not going because something's not right. We may have a student who just has some severe behavioral needs, and we're getting, you know, paperwork every day that they're being secluded and restrained. Maybe the student needs a greater academic focus and has grown out of the need for that behavioral support, but maybe they're not ready to be in district. But it's usually, we've also had cases too where the parent and the added district placement just cannot continue in a positive way forward. And so it's better for us to change that placement and explore other options than to try to force something that's not going to work. It doesn't happen a ton, but it does happen where we do have to change the school. And it typically happens, actually, there's no, it's hard to, to say rhyme or reason, but it's a variety of reasons. And usually, we've met, and we've tried to do a lot of things, including sometimes we, we even ourselves go to those places to try to determine what's going on. You know, we will go to an Attlebrook or somewhere else, we'll observe the student, and we'll get a firsthand look, and then determine, okay, this really isn't working, or here's some things you can put in place. But it's just something that starts as a good fit, doesn't always stay a good fit because students change. And also, the programs are changing, just as we're having staffing turnover. I'll go to call, you know, a director of one of those, a lot of those programs. And I know you're from River Street, and River Street is more established, but some of the other programs tend to have a lot of staff turnover, and that. other programs tend to have a lot of staff turnover and that turnover sometimes is negatively impactful on our.
Any other questions? Mr. Halleck?
Um, thank you. Um, going back to paras for a second, you mentioned some days you'll be fully staffed, some days you won't be. Is there a paras leaving our district or is there a reason why they're leaving or?
Paras are leaving our district. I mean, in my first three years of doing this, I didn't see, again, this kind of turnover, specifically even when I taught at Sage Park, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think we had the same paras every year. Maybe we hired someone new here or there. They're, they're leaving for a lot of reasons. It is a difficult position. You can make as much money at Target. Other districts are offering significantly more pay. And I think, you know, sometimes the jobs are inequitable, so you might be working with a more challenging student, but you get paid the same as someone who's working with a less challenging student. And then also the absences of our staff and everything going on, even if it may be COVID-related or flu-related, paras are asked to cover students or cover two students or, you know, we try to abide by their contract and make sure they get a break, but it's hard when you come in every day and all of a sudden you're asked to do something out of what you're used to doing. You know, people like their routine, their security, and I think what we see sometimes is when they're asked to shift to another student because maybe someone's out or we have a staffing shortage, it's hard for them to see maybe the students they work with then negatively impacted. Because when we're desperate, you know, we have to move the paras on to maybe someone who can't function without a para, but then you have those other kids that are, you know, still not getting what they need. And so a lot of our paras take that to heart. And, you know, we, we're just trying to encourage good attendance and trying to boost morale and professionally develop the paras, but I think, you know, when we look at their contract moving forward, we have to look at their pay because we are not comparable with other districts at all. And when one person leaves and they get a good deal and they're enjoying where they are, I mean, we've had, we've had multiples in buildings leave this year because they've gone to neighboring districts.
The CREC and Hartford, right now, I mean, they're like, pay is that much, five dollars. We're going into negotiations with paras in a couple of months. In your mind?
And I mean, we do have amazing paraeducators. We've tried to recruit some of them to, you know, go back to school, but it's not always easy and there's a lot of variables like families and money and, you know, but some of our staff are so amazing. And so when we see them go, it's like, you know, really gut-wrenching and the students too, I think, really struggle with, with that staffing, the staffing changes. So anything we can do on that end would be much appreciated by our, by our group and I think all the admin in the audience.
Any other questions? Ms. Taylor?
Thank you for all that you do. You know, my heart is there. You take care of my baby. So I, just a couple of things, because I think a lot of people don't realize when we're talking about like staffing, when we're talking about the education level to be a special education teacher. It's, it's beyond, you know, general ed, not, general education teachers can't do what special education teachers do. So you're asking for folks to come out of school with their masters, doing all these things, and then we're not paying them enough to do the things. And then you have other districts, I'm not going to shout other districts out with $5,000 sign-on bonus. So folks were leaving, you know, as quick as, you know, as they were coming in. So I just want to share that with the full board because that's something that I used to do for a living. When we're talking about recruitment and things of that nature, I know Dr. Hill and some of you have, you know, speak to, you know, folks that are in undergrad and things of that nature. Are we building pipelines earlier? Because what we're finding out in the world of education is that people aren't coming out with the degree. So recruitment aside, if folks don't have the credentials, you can't recruit them. So just thinking about creating pipelines and thinking about talking to our students on the high school level, making sure that they understand that education is an opportunity, making sure that their climate and culture of their classes and, I mean, anybody who has a bad experience in high school or middle school isn't going to want to teach because they're like, why would I want to do that? You know, because it's hard. So I'm just thinking, you know, just trying to put my thinking cap on of how we can possibly just make sure that we're creating, you know, in-home or in-house or in-town or in-district pipelines, making sure that maybe somebody who just graduated from high school, showing them the opportunity of, of what that means, like to maybe be a paraeducator while you're in school, things of that nature. And also just shouting out to the fact that, because I think oftentimes there's myths that there's just this large boom of special education in the district. That's not true. Thank you for busting that wide open. And I also want to, to share that I know for a fact that parents reach out to me, not only because I'm on the board, but I have a child that receives services, and saying, you know, your praises. I hear about like the horror stories from other districts and the crack in the magnet schools, and on the surface it looks like it's a better education there, but I will tell you, by and large, they are singing your praises here in Windsor, so catch yourself in the back, keep doing what you're doing. I know it's stressful. My mother just got recruited back to Hartford after retiring. We almost got her a child, but, but I am working, you know, on your behalf as well with my contacts, making sure that they understand that Windsor is a great place to be. But I think we can do a better job with puffing ourselves up. I think our social media has been, you know, really bolstered. I think that there's so much more that we can do to show folks right here in town that there's opportunities in our, in our district. And while you get that education, you know what, come and, come and work. I think really think about maybe adding that to maybe a coffee chat or something to show, to share, you know, we are, we are hiring and it's not just for teaching for other.
Yeah, and I just wanted to bring this up and it's really, Dr. Oliver, Ms. Fudge and Mr. Parker brought to us a Yukon course that is an ECE course that can be taught at Windsor High School as special ed is kind of like the topic and, you know, anyone interested in education and/or special education. And so we weren't sure if we could find someone to teach it, but Ms. Raphael at Windsor High School has offered to teach it next year. So we are hoping that that's another way maybe we can, you know, pull some people in and also allow those kids to earn some college credit. So I really appreciate them and Ms. Raphael's, you know, willingness to teach it. Hopefully, fingers crossed, we get a lot of students.
Mr. Wallaston?
Ms. Taylor spoke on just finding more creative ways to get teaching staff, especially for special education. I know at the Cape Conference, I sat through a track, they had their, their teacher residency program presentation that they had. I'm sure that the director or the lady who put it on, I know she was trying to hound Dr. Hill down, but just from even sitting through, just from even sitting through the presentation, there is a cost to the program, but as far as finding a more creative way to get teachers in, you, you're going to pay that extra cost, but you're getting a three-year guarantee that the teacher will stay in district and it's going to be a Windsor resident as well. And I feel like when it comes time to budget season, if that is something that we do explore, we can sell it to the community just off the fact that it's a reality-building community. It's creating a teacher from Windsor and, yeah, there is available cost to it, but I feel like if there is something that is easier sellable to the, I mean, if there's going to be something that should be easy to sell to the community, it should be that, that we're literally building teachers from our own community.
The cost of tuition tends to be the number one reason when we approach staff about going back to school and exploring options. That is, is always the number one. And, you know, I, I don't know who'd, you know, we sit on meetings and we try to talk to people and I email Brian Klimkowitz, but I honestly, I think they're going to have to start making schooling free or we're not going to have teachers. And I don't know, you know, how bad it has to get for, for that to happen, but we could have a lot more quality candidates that really want to work with children if the money wasn't a barrier.
Other questions? Mr. Panos?
I haven't asked a question before. Me. Regarding the spectrum I'm talking about, it was least restrictive. How do you know, how do you assure that it is the, when you say least restrictive, I'm just kind of curious with what the standard is? Offhand, when say it could be the least restrictive, given that they're learning the most or, I don't know, you know, that there's a diminishing return or something. In other words, if, if, if you say, well, okay, you know, typically, if you, if you tutor someone anyway, you typically say, well, that's going to be the fastest way that they learn. And now you may have to make them sometimes to get company or something like this once a week or a few hours or something like this, but typically you would say a person, if you wanted to teach someone whatever stuff, math, foreign language, whatever it is, you would generally get a lot more if you were tutoring. And so how does that interact here? I mean, if you, and it was, if you're not giving, I'm not, this would be asked for more special ed teachers, you know, but, you know, how do you make that determination that it is actually least restrictive based on what you?
Well, I, I think, you know, what we look at is we start at the least restrictive environment and at the secondary level, we progress monitor fourth. Here at the elementary level, it's three times. Those line up with report cards. So if we're providing a student with special education and the services are within the classroom and they're not making progress, then we move on to pulling them out certain parts of the day. If that's not working and there are other factors, we may look at a completely self-contained program. So we're constantly looking at that progress and we may be, you know, moving students to a more restrictive environment, but we're also pretty frequently moving them to back into the classroom once they're ready. So there isn't really a formula, but we would not let a student be in the least restrictive environment, the general education setting, and fail for a year. You know, after a certain amount of time, we would have to look at, you know, do they need more special ed? Do they need to be out of the classroom? Do they need a specialized program?
Now, you say, there's a little something on the, on the one-year versus the three-year evaluations. Is the three-year evaluation then just far more comprehensive? Is that the whole?
Yeah, so the one-year, some, some kids we go to PPT monthly, like we have 10 meetings a, a year on the student, but it's what they need, right? Other students yearly will come back to the table and we'll have data on the goals and objectives, we'll review their benchmark data, we might review behavioral data. For the three-year evaluations, they tend to be very comprehensive. So we're doing another school psychological, we're doing another academic achievement eval. We might be updating their developmental history, we might be doing a speech eval. So that every three years it's more standardized. And then when they're initially referred, we tend to do more, more comprehensive evaluations.
So do you ever dismiss someone after one year rather than wait for the three?
We do, but typically at that one-year mark, if they were being very successful, we would be looking to reduce services, you know, and, and speed up that re-evaluation cycle. But we tend not to exit students without doing comprehensive evaluations.
Oh, you have to do that.
Yeah, and that's more of a liability where if we dismiss someone and someone came back, we don't have that standardized norm data to show their function.
In the PPT, the requirement for an administrator to be present, you know, it can be a costly thing to have, you know, that, you know, is that a, is that a legal requirement? Or is that, is that, is that really, or, and as a separate question, is it necessary in your?
So an administrator must be present or an administrator, administrative designee. So sometimes we do have other people step into the role. However, it's important to have the administrator there because they can speak to how they're building functions. And then also if there is a question that's kind of above what our special education and general education teachers can answer, our administrators are more enough to kind of come in, maybe facilitate, answer more difficult questions. You know, we do have other people sit in, but we have them kind of divvy them up in their buildings so that maybe one administrator isn't tied up. The different buildings have PPT days, so maybe, you know, Clover is Tuesday, JFK is Wednesday, I'm making that up, I don't think those are the real days. And, you know, at Sage, the administrators and at the high school, go by level, will step in and be admin sometimes, but it is a legal requirement, either administrator or administrative designee. And when it's a designee, we tend to look to our staff who have their O92, just because they have a little bit more education and they have.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions here, the board? You had mentioned about the impact before of potentially of COVID. Have you talked to others in other districts? Are they seeing some areas where there's more prevalence of particular disability than others?
I think every single issue that we're experiencing, Bloomfield, Avon, Granby, Hartford, they're all going through it. So at the high school, we're seeing students disengaged and not attending. That's happening in other districts. When we were having expulsions for weapons, that was happening in all the districts. It's really not a unique problem. The Windsor, we're all on these calls really experiencing, no one's sitting there going, you know, well, everything's swimming, going, you know, great here. You know, the extent of the impact and maybe the resources available changes, we have a lot of resources. We have a lot of social workers that can, you know, target those disengaged kids while, you know, other directors don't have as many resources, don't have as many in-district programs, and so they struggle a little bit more. But I, I don't think any of the issues that we are experiencing are unique to us. They are different than what we saw in 2018 and 2019 and, you know, those are the years I've been an administrator, but even it's my experiences as a teacher, things are just a lot different. And, and I think a lot of that is, you know, the students are different and having a disability and going through a pandemic is, is more challenging. And then with the staffing shortages, it's just, it's a different world. Like, I feel like it's a, we're trying to survive world in special ed and it was always tough, but it's just, it's, I always say, if we could be fully staffed, like, you know, everything would be great, but our students and our staff have really risen to the challenge and a lot of our students who, you know, may have been struggling are in a way better place this year than they were last year and the year before, so.
Well, we, we all appreciate what you all do and we know we, even though we often talk about student achievement, we know if students aren't well, if families aren't well, you can't learn. And so I think we've got a lot of hard work to do with the upcoming budget that Dr. Hill will be delivering next month, so, and obviously getting feedback. I know with CREC's intern program, there's, not only have the rest and CREC doing it, but other districts are picking up on it. And it's, it is expensive and it doesn't mean you need to do 10. It could be one or two as a trial, how does it work? So it doesn't become a budget buster, but I could see we'd be losing potentially some good qualified people who then move up to another job and we have to backfill their, their other position here, which may also be hard to fill, so. I know it's not easy, but any last comments by board members?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, President.
Great.
We're next going to do announcements. We'll let the room clear for people who, as long as Dr. Hill's, as long as Dr. Hill's okay with that.
What is it here?
And that's what falls two pages, double space.
Regulations. Oh, yeah. What in heaven is that? Oh, yeah. Yeah, this is great. Yeah, you shouldn't have done this.
It's only eight twenty. I've got 10 pages of announcements here, between now and the 20th. I had a nice salmon dinner, I broiled salmon dinner before I am. There's just enough for me and the missus.
Two fish and five loaves, make it work.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. I've got ten pages of announcements here, between now and the twentieth. I had a nice uh salmon dinner, I broiled salmon dinner before I am. There's just enough for me and the missus now.
Two fish and five loaves, make it work.
Okay. Yes, Neil. Okay, uh, any announcements? Um, I'll start first with Jolene remotely. Any announcements, Ms. Golinski?
Hi, everyone. Um, no announcements, I guess I would just say that I'm sorry I'm just taking you all in person, but I hope I'm had a great evening and I'll see you all in just a few short weeks.
Great. Ms. Clay?
I have no announcements, thank you.
Mr. Halleck?
No announcements tonight, thank you.
Mr. Wallaston?
Nor do I.
Ms. Cantor?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
But I'm going to wait until the next meeting, thank you.
Mr. Panos, I know you have several pages.
I have several more pages for Ms. Wykowski.
You're going to start reading the Constitution or something?
Thank you.
Mr. Lockhart?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
So I'm going to be the one that keeps everybody here, I guess. I just want to let you all know, I've already sent a message to the board that Team Paragon Robotics is having its open house on Saturday from ten to one. There are three different teams, we have an elementary school team, a middle school team and a high school team, and we hope people will be able to see uh our mentors and students in action. It also coincides with, um, we picked that day because we were scheduled to participate with uh Windsor EMS in a Project Santa toy, uh, toy drive, and Windsor EMS pulled out, so I pulled in Mr. Lockhart. Uh, and the, and the fire department to take the place of EMS, so this could be pulled off, and Team Paragon is, is really taking the lead with it. Um, but uh Leonard has been very generous with his time, and um that'll be Saturday and Sunday, the Saturday and Sunday from nine to three, and uh I've also gone to Windsor High School to uh request students who may need community service hours to supplement us. That's all I have, is there a motion there? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. uh Leonard Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Paul Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Sentience, motion carries nine, zero, zero, we are. Out of here at eight twenty-two.